Let's see.
Allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call this meeting of Independent School District 544 Florida Order. Clarity, take vote.
Sure.
Kirby Anderson.
Present.
Natalie Knudsen.
Here.
Steve Igasa.
Present.
Matt Limkey here. Melanie Cole is absent and Ms. Steve Hermes is absent, but we do have a form.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda with some additions and modifications that were presented to us?
So moved.
One second.
Okay, we have a resolution of acknowledgements. Thank you to the DFW Post 612 for their donation of a U.S.-flagged Cleveland school and to Helen Hayton for her donation of fabric to the FACS department. Can I get a motion?
I'll have the resolution move for its adoption.
In a second. And a roll call, please.
Natalie Knudsen.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Steve Igasa.
Yes.
Matt Limkey, yes. Resolution passes.
All right, we have a presentation for the World's Best Workforce presented by Christie Sullivan. Welcome.
All right, as you know, in 2013, Minnesota Statute Section 120B11 requires schools and districts to develop and implement a World's Best Workforce strategic plan. And as a part of that plan, we as a district have formed a committee of community members, including parents, teachers, support staff, and other community members as a part of our Curriculum Review Advisory Committee cycle. And so, the report that I'm sharing with you tonight was shared with the District Curriculum Review Advisory Committee last week, and with their feedback was approved unanimously for your review tonight. So our World's Best Workforce Plan, we're required by statute to have at least five goals, and they are in the areas of school readiness, third grade literacy, closing achievement gaps among student groups, career and college readiness, and high school graduation. This is our mission for the Ferguson Public Schools, our values, and our belief statements. The first goal that I'll report progress on is school readiness, and our goal is for all students who attend Otter Preschool to be kindergarten-ready. You can see last year in the Otter Preschool or at Lincoln School, 126 families were served with preschool education services. In ECFE, there were 83 families served through a United Way and ECFE Child Care Visitor Program. 112 home visits were performed. You'll notice that the overall preschool numbers are higher than the ones that are reported for kindergarten readiness, and that is because some preschoolers were three-year-olds and some were four-year-olds, so some do not go on to kindergarten after that one year. Overall, Otter Preschool numbers, 18% were reported as this fall as being kindergarten-ready, 67% partially ready, and 15% not ready. And we use a district-developed tool to rate kindergarten readiness, and that includes several different areas: reading, math, social skills, dexterity, physical skills, bike motor skills, et cetera. One thing that we are excited to see moving toward the future, working into progress for next year, is that our Otter Preschool is now offering some full-day preschool education for students as opposed to the half-days that were offered in the last year. The next goal is third grade literacy, also known as the Read Well by Three. Our district has a third grade literacy plan. You'll see on this page that the top bar is our Minnesota, or excuse me, our Ferguson Falls School District MCA scores for third graders, and that would be from last spring. Remember, we did not have MCA's the year before because of COVID. Our numbers are down, so are the states, and we are seeing the effects of interrupted learning from pandemic pressure. But overall, still, our numbers are strong compared relatively to the state. 56% proficient in reading here in Ferguson Falls compared to 48% of the state. And this includes our IQ Academy. The next goal is to close achievement gaps among all student groups. You'll see on this page just some background on this goal and some strategies that we are employing in order to close these achievement gaps. These are the demographics of our student enrollment by recent intensity and then also by other criteria. And this page shows more of a breakdown between student groups. The maroon bars of this chart being the state of Minnesota's numbers and the gold being Ferguson Falls. You'll see that overall, our numbers are relatively higher than the state's in most areas. There are some exceptions, the American Indian Alaska Native. We show 0% proficiency, that was one student. So some of these cell sizes are very small compared to others, so that might skew the data a bit. And two areas that are kind of on radar here are that our English learner. Numbers, when we look at achievement gaps, that's wider than some of the other achievement gap levels that we see. And also, our Black African-American achievement gap numbers are lower than we'd like to see them, and we are working to boost those and close achievement gaps there. Career and college readiness, our goal is that all students obtain career and college readiness before graduating from high school. We are right along with the state as far as our ACT mean composite score. That's the average score for the ACT overall. Most of our ACT indicators are higher than the state in math, science, and reading, and I believe English was just below the state number. You'll also see on this page some numbers included for eighth-grade math proficiency. And some people might wonder why eighth-grade math MCA numbers would be on this indicator for progress on this goal. And it is because algebra proficiency is cited as one of the number, one of the top reasons for dropouts nationwide. People who drop out of high school cite not being able to pass an eighth-grade algebra course as one of their top factors. With our career and college readiness, we are offering several new programming pieces. We have a work-based learning that was begun fairly recently. We had 25 students in that program full-time last year. Each student develops an Otter Success Plan, which charts the progress and kind of the trajectory of career and college planning for students grades eight through 12. In addition, our automotive department continues to offer ACE certification, Automotive Service Excellence, where students can gain certification after completing those courses. Throughout the school year, students are exposed to different industry and college tours. We're having two career fairs this year at KSS that we're very excited about. And we continue to offer Certified Nursing Assistant Program here, which includes class, lab, and nursing home practicum hours, so students can gain certification to work in a medical or nursing home setting. And in addition, we offer lots of technical education courses, including small engines, woodworking, welding, business, and automotive. We're also implementing project-based learning in all of our courses, where teachers strive to create authentic interdisciplinary units so that students can gain real hands-on learning experiences that help prepare them with 21st century workforce skills: collaboration, creativity, communication, and critical thinking. And our last goal is for high school graduation. Our goal is that all students graduate within four years, career and college-ready. That is the state goal that we have adopted as well. Our numbers are pretty strong actually for your graduation. We're at a 94%, and this is based off of 2020. The 2021 rates have not been released by the state yet. 94% for Kennedy Secondary School, 49% for IQ Academy, our online program, and 43% for the Ferguson Falls Area Learning Center. Some might see that 43 and think that's, that's, looks low. I encourage you to remember that the Alternative Learning Center is in itself a dropout prevention strategy. Students often enroll when they are already behind in credit. And so, the state also does identify and track their graduation rates for five, six, and seven-year. And we have seen a great increase in these numbers over the last few years.
Christie, are they still combining that, or looking at graduation rates as far as like the state level? What's that, SLED? Is that what that's called?
SLEDs.
Yeah. Is that, are they still combining, well, with IQ, so it looks like our rate is down to 70?
They do.
Or whatever.
Our overall rate as a district is 72%.
Okay. Wow, that's cool.
Yep. And the SLEDs, State Longitudinal Education, I can't remember what the full thing stands for, but they still do compile all of that data, and that does include four, five, six, and seven-year rates. It also includes ACT scores. There are some workforce data correlations on there, although I'm not sure how accurate they are.
Sure.
It also shows us on the SLEDs system how many students who graduate from high school enroll in post-secondary education, who are persistent in college, who graduate with two-year and four-year degrees, and is also how many students end up taking developmental education courses, which means high school-level courses and college-level.
And there's no talk of separating, because does that, because that, once you're below a certain percentage overall, even though, that's kind of not fair. I mean, you've got the two schools that are designed to elongate that time of graduation where you have to still be on like a performance improvement plan or something like that. Is there any, do you have any idea if they're going to change that, so it's, I mean, we're looking at 94%?
So the Minnesota's Every Student Succeeds Act Plan, each state had their own opportunity to create a plan for their state using federal legislation. And so Minnesota chose to identify schools based off of, schools and districts based off of four-year graduation rates. Now, that was a three-year identification cycle, and last year was an off-year because of COVID. And so, there will be a new identification formula used. I don't anticipate it being the same as it was this time, but I don't know for sure over what shape that'll take.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I think it's worth noting, you said that Kennedy had a 94% graduation rate, and the real fine print down there says state average is 84%, so that's significant. And even the ALC is 43%, the state average for alternative schools is 45%, so we're pretty close to the rest of the state in that, so.
And I have worked with alternative schools that have consistent four-year graduation rates in the 20s. So 43 is a really strong number, and the ALC continues to implement some really great programs and strategies. They do great work.
Can I go back on this slide, just, just because I have a curious question on, another one, one more with the graphs. One more, sorry, that one. When they're talking about special education and then non-special education as subgroups, is that your, what are they using on that part of it? Are they saying, is it just everybody, or what is it, or is it the ones that don't qualify for special education but yet have a?
It's all students who do not have an IEP, Individual Education Plan.
Okay. And special education to be the gamenable category, so it doesn't necessarily mean they have that capability in that particular area?
Any.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question. Any other questions for Christie? Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to our board reports, and tonight we'll be starting with an audit report by IBALEE via Zoom.
Okay, you are up, John.
I apologize, can everybody hear me? Can you turn it up on your end a little bit, Jeff? I hope everyone can hear me, if I'm too loud or going through stuff or anything like that, feel free to just put up in and stop me at any point in time. My name is John Hagan, I've been with IBALEE for about six years and been helping out on various different audits. Like that, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, sorry, just want to make sure. But again, I have been helping on school district audits for all of those years, and in particular, the Ferguson Falls District for about the last handful. So today we'll go over a brief summary of the audit. We call the executive summary with some tables and graphs to help with kind of comparative formatting. But feel free to stop me if anybody has any questions throughout. Hopefully, I'll be pretty quick and painless for you guys, about 10, 15 minutes or so. I will stop sharing my face now, unfortunately, you guys can't look at me, just because I tend to start lagging if I'm doing both this and the slide deck at the same time, so. Okay, all right, so moving into the presentation, you know, a little bit of background on audit timeline. We usually start planning our procedures in the May-June timeframe, and then we also have a dedicated week of fieldwork for the Ferguson Falls District. This week was on the week of September 6th, and everything since then has been post-fieldwork and wrap-up. And we are, we will be issuing the financial statements here shortly. This year, we did not, we're not able to issue final financials for the presentation just because the district does have some transfers that will need to be approved by the board and kind of discussed, I believe, maybe even today. Blake can correct me if I'm wrong there. But as far as besides the transfers, no other audit results or numbers anticipated to change. And I'll kind of point those out as we go along here today as well. With that, we'll kind of jump right in into the audit results and findings for the year. So this year, the district did receive what we call an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion. So what does that mean? Management is responsible for preparing the financial statements in accordance with GAAP, that there are no material misstatements, and that they are presented fairly. So we as auditors, we come out and through various process procedures, we obtain reasonable but not absolute assurance that these three items are being followed. And if that is the case, then we do issue an unmodified opinion. So again, as in previous years, the district did receive another clean audit report, which ultimately is what you're striving for. Kind of a secondary area of the audit is any entity that expends more than $750,000 in federal funds a year are required to get a single audit, which is kind of a separate set of procedures that we as auditors come out and perform at the same time as a regular audit. So this, again, we do perform separately, and we issue a separate clean on this as well. Again, the district did receive an unmodified opinion this year, similar to previous years. And just the nature of the district, you guys will be having a federal audit pretty much every year, so again, pretty normal and consistent for you guys. The dollar amount did jump up this year to about 3.2 million in federal awards and expenditures, which were due to some additional federal money that came in via CRF or ESTER and GEAR, which we'll again kind of touch base on a little bit later. But overall, key takeaways is that the district did receive unmodified opinions on both financial statements and federal funds. So lastly, to go over a few of the audit findings for the year. The first two are the preparation of the financial statements, including the scheduled expenditure of federal awards and correlating findings from material journal entries. So these do go hand-in-hand. When you have one, more times than not, you have the other. Pretty consistent with districts of your guys' size and smaller, something that we see on a grand majority of our audits. In a nutshell, it just means that we are preparing the financial statements and the related note disclosures, and in doing so, we do propose a few journal entries to get the financial statements in accordance with GAAP. Again, pretty consistent with findings that you guys have had in previous years as well. There were no federal award findings this year, and there was one Minnesota legal compliance, which is kind of a separate area that MDE requires us to look at a handful of things. Part of that is we do some dive into student activity accounts. And one area that we saw is some inactive student activity accounts this year. Kind of a catch-22 a little bit this year because some of those activities were not active mainly due to COVID. However, MDE still requires us to report on that. And that district is supposed to have a written action plan for any of those particular student accounts that don't have activity throughout the year. So fairly quick fix going forward, but also more likely than not that there will be activity going forward as well with, you know, cross our fingers, COVID slowing down further and further. So with that, we'll kind of jump into some of the numbers for the year. We'll start by going over some cash and investment balances. This is a pretty simple graph showing the last 10 years of district balances. This graph is in thousands. So the ending cash balance for the, for all district funds at the end of FY21 was just over $14 million. One other thing to point out about this is this does not include the Capital Projects Fund, just because money kind of flow in with timings of debt proceeds as well as the progression of the projects. So that can kind of sway this graph pretty significantly, so we just like to leave it out for comparative purposes. But an overall pretty strong increase in tendency here of growing cash investment balance over the last 10 years. We'll go into some specific discussion over the general fund, which is obviously the main operating fund for the district. First important slide is point out the ADM served for the district, being that this is the biggest driver of both revenue and expenditures for districts. Again, pretty strong tendency of increasing over the last decade, with an increase of ADMs compared to last year, we were 100 overall. Next, we'd like to just do a kind of a brief overview of budgets to actual comparison. This is kind of a high-level review of different buckets for both revenues and expenditures of the district. The first column being your budgeted numbers, your second column is your actual, and the third is the variance. For the most part, we're not too concerned with variances, but I do kind of want to just point out some of the reasonings for some of these variances. Again, budgeting is not an exact science, with a lot of things obviously unknown and changing throughout the year. I'll put a big asterisk at this as well, with FY21 being all things COVID. Pretty tough to anticipate and project, you know, what was going to happen. But the first variance there on the state sources, that change would probably largely do is the increase in ADMs. The federal sources for revenues, that variance of about 1.4 billion. Again, tough to anticipate what you're going to receive from the new federal funds. The district did receive just under 900,000 in CRF coronavirus relief funds, as well as just under 400,000 in ESTER and GEAR money, so a large bulk of that increase in federal dollars. Jumping down a little bit into the expenditures column. Here for the biggest difference, you know, a lot of these differences can be caused on differences between coatings, you know, whose time gets coded to what kind of department or district area. The regular instruction was probably demands for additional teachers. A lot of, a lot of that relates to COVID, as well as increase in enrollment, which in turn means an increased staffing. The sites and buildings difference there, the variance, I know the district had originally anticipated on doing some additional long-term facility maintenance-type projects, roofing projects, et cetera, that had related with the impact of COVID and the great unknown there. And then lastly, the other column, the largest variance, is relating to the certificates of participation payments for the principal and interest is actually made out of the general fund, which just the district did not budget for that, and that was about $500,000. So a long-winded answer to get you to the point of having revenues over expenditures of the year, about 1.8 million. This was before a transfer out of 1.8, just a little less 1.8 million. This transfer out was made to the Capital Projects Fund to offset some of the Lincoln Project. I know that there are some changes in the project scope and cost there, so the general fund did have to help off the capital projects to finish off that project. So at the end of the day, the district does have a fund balance in the general fund of just a tad over, under 9 million, about 8.9 million, which we'll kind of keep discussing here over the next coming slides. So what does a positive fund balance do for the district? A few of the key takeaways here contributes to favorable bond rating, getting those lower interest rates for any potential bonds issuance going forward. It produces investment income, having your money work for you. And then three, most importantly, offers a cushion for unexpected expenditures or revenue shortfalls going forward. So with the, with the fund balance for the district, it's broken down into a few different categories. I won't spend too much time on this slide, just other than pointing out that there are different categories. The first two buckets, non-spendable and restricted. The district did not have control over the dollar amounts that go, that are placed into those categories at the end of the year, with the other three being more so in the district control. So to put some numbers behind that, the very bottom right number there is 8.9 million, which I kind of pointed out on the previous slide. So this is kind of the dollar amount breakout of the different categories for the year, based on kind of a previous slide of different buckets. Again, I won't spend too much time on this particular slide, just knowing that there are those different buckets. And we'll kind of keep talking about that here in the next couple of slides as well. So this is another format for those fund balances. Again, the orange bucket is your unassigned category. Now, I know one of the topics here today, and I kind of briefly touched on earlier, is that there are some proposed transfers that will be being made to the general fund. One of those transfers will be moving money from community service to general fund. This is a one-time allowable transfer that MDE is allowing to move. Some of that money in community service that's kind of usually tied up with restrictions like ECFE or school readiness, and allowing it to move into unrestricted general fund fund balance just kind of frees up that money to be used at the district's discretion. In talking with Blake, it sounds like the district will be capitalizing on that and moving roughly $700,000 from community service to the general fund. So you will see some of these numbers jump up for FY21 due to that transfer. I know there is also a proposed transfer on the table as well in discussions with Blake in moving some of the unassigned ending fund balance into an assignment, which is basically just the district internally earmarking those dollar amounts for whatever purposes they want. In this case, I believe the plan is to use for future projects, specifically a Lincoln, additional Lincoln project. Blake, you can jump in and correct me if I'm wrong on anything I said transfer-related. Uh, Blake, you can jump in and correct me if I'm wrong on on anything I said transfer related.
No, in the it it it's not only limited to the Lincoln project, it's linked, it's linked, it's also um to be assigned to other projects such as roofing. Um, other projects, but yes, Lincoln will be a part of that as well.
But overall, the area of capital projects in nature.
Yep.
So continuing on with the fund balance discussion, so where should the district be? Um, that's kind of the the great unknown of the natural question, there isn't really a right or wrong. Um, the G F O A, which is the National Association of All Thing Governments, the their kind of suggested guideline is about sixteen percent. They're having something two months um sitting in a general in that general fund. Um, the district does currently have a policy of 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 guideline of having no less than eight percent of annual expenditures sitting in fund balance. Uh, so that eight percent would equal about two point eight million, which the district is uh typical. Well, another graph, I put put that word into comparative purposes. Here is the district's unrestricted fund bound, made up of that committed assigned unassigned categories over the last ten years. The Maroon line there in the middle represents the district policy of eight percent. So again, the district is is well above that, and the the top line there, just for some comparative purposes, is actually the state average. Um, information is only out through FY twenty on that, FY twenty-one will come out here for a while, um after all districts are finished reporting. But just does give a little bit of comparative nature um for the entire state. Again, not necessarily apples and apples all the time, just because a lot of districts are more rural. Or, you know, I think some of the inner-city districts are quite a bit bigger, but. Just for some comparative purposes, uh, again, these these bars will change a little bit based on where the transfer numbers fall um that the district is proposing. With that, that kind of wraps up my spiel as far as the general fund goes, quickly before I leave, uh, we'll just quickly touch base on. Two of the other funds for the district, the first one being the community service. Um, again, the district has been going pretty steadily over the last ten years. Uh, with having an ending fund balance of just under eight hundred thousand as it currently sits for twenty twenty-one. Uh, again, getting back to the transfer thing, that number uh will be getting reduced significantly. Uh, down to to pretty much break even or just slightly over, I believe, uh, is where the current proposition is, um, moving that money into the general fund. Lastly, another slide here on the the food service fund. This is a gift that this kind of gift into the bone last ten years. Uh, the the fund balance did grow fairly significantly in twenty twenty-one, which was mostly due to some additional child nutrition money. That came in with federal dollars and being that all student meals were free uh in FY twenty-one. The Maroon line on this one does indicate an M D E maximum allowable fund balance of three months worth of expenditures. Um, this isn't a hard and fast maximum, it it just kind of a guideline, anytime you're reporting with that, dollar amount, they kind of want you to start looking at. Improvements of equipment or anything like that, but um overall, the district is in a very strong position with the food service fund balance. So that does end my presentation tonight, does anybody have any questions or anything they want to discuss for me to kind of go into in detail? I'll also open it up to Blake to add input on anything that I maybe overlooked, or or uh if he has any additional.
Any question, anything you want to add?
No. He he thought we spoke before uh he came on and presented, and he captured all my. Questions or concerns that I may have had, or maybe somebody may have uh foreseen after they heard it. Um, I'm John did a great job presenting everything that I need to get across.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, John.
So, before I do, I do just want to say thank you to to Jeff and Blake and the rest of the finance department.
Sure.
Um, you know, I for the audit purposes, we are fairly demanding on requests that we have. Um, and they're just great to work with and always answer timely and stuff like that, so we really do appreciate working with you guys and. Um, you know, hope to go forward with the same attitude, so thank you guys.
Thanks, take care, John.
Alright, and have a good night.
You too.
Okay, well, we'll move on to our next board report from Kirby Anderson, Five Forty Four Education Foundation Finance.
Okay, well, nothing from the from the formal finance committee, although we just had the the board, of course. On the uh Five Forty Four Foundation, we did meet on Thursday of uh last week, Jeff and I were both there. And uh some of the highlights of the meeting, uh, Treasuries Report, so now the total assets of the foundation are just over one point eight million. Which is a uh an increase from about one point four million one year ago. Um, and I'll talk about that here in just a little bit, about about some of the uh, some of the thoughts that 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 the group is looking at. Anyway, um, some of the other highlights right now, following your newsletter is that it's a picture. Um, they want to give a shout out, there's a a nationwide gift to the max day um over November eighteenth this week. So that'd be Thursday, so there's lots of different things going on locally, um, both locally and statewide and nationwide, so. If you have a favorite charity to give to the max day is Thursday, it's something to take advantage of. Um, honor pride night, we did serve uh five or six hundred meals, we netted about fifteen hundred dollars for the foundation. Um, about another fifteen hundred for the for the staff uh luncheon that we did. Uh, right before school opened. And those are just two examples of some of the fundraisers that the uh, the foundation does. The other major ones would be the Hall of Fame um event, and then the uh, the golf scramble that's done every year. Um, the balance of the money that comes in, you know, we got a four hundred thousand in the past year. The balance of that is is basically, we have about fifteen major dollars that give five hundred and forty-four dollars or more each year. And the the last piece would be the endowments that we get when people are doing estate planning. And so we did have a discussion, I think there's uh, there's looking at the at the growth of the fund and and how we've. Of the foundation has been uh can spread the money out between scholarships and between uh wish lists for the the teachers and different. Different grants that are given on grant requests. And so I think the the foundation will continue to see, to look at what our what our mission is as a foundation. Um, we want to continue to build um and have more endowments and and have more restricted funds, or do we want to take some of this money and and. And use this grants on specific areas that are that are needed in the district that aren't necessarily funded through traditional uh, through traditional school finances. So we'll continue with that discussion. Um, other than that, um, pretty much, let's see, the major donor campaign is ongoing, again, that's the fifteen major donors from five hundred and forty-four dollars or more each. Um, and we're looking at uh grants and scholarships as usual. Uh, next meeting will be Thursday, the ninth of December at New, so so that's about it for the foundation, if you have any questions.
So, do they, you said they're gonna be like reevaluating, how much? Do they have like a dollar amount that they can give away every year, or do they kind of, is that more subjective every year?
It is, yeah, good question, yeah, they uh, they they have restricted money basically with endowments, they have to go to specific scholarships. And each year, there's so many dollars that are that they free up, and that's their, they have a committee that does that. And so now there's some discussions of, you know, we've had a round where we've had grants, and we've had uh wish lists, the wish lists are 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 funded partially by the foundation. Mostly by by donors, separate from the foundation, where you can just say, I want to take that wish list and I want to pay for that, I want to give two hundred dollars towards that classroom. So it it's more of a personalized thing for givers. But I think uh, one of the things that bounce around is maybe a second round of grants where we could, we have uh, increase or even our, not just our staff, but our principals. Say, do we have something that's that we we'd like to have, but it isn't in the budget cycle that's here, but it's something that we we've got a couple years and. You know, so maybe something like the A L C kitchen for the community, or uh, that would be one example, maybe. Uh, you know, different examples, uh, maybe the kitchen downstairs, you know, maybe Lance would like to replace that refrigerator, it's only at forty-two degrees, you know, a couple years sooner than what Zinnius planned. Um, you know, he has another warmer down there that needs replacing, so. And there are a bunch of seconds to replace, but it would certainly make sense if we can, if they have money available, we could uh, could use that.
So they're kind of finding that they, they didn't get enough, do you think they get? Are they saying that they didn't get enough requests, and like, well, we have way more money than they thought?
They get enough requests for the money that they've allocated, and then, so that there's some discussion amongst the members, should we, should we allocate more money? Or do we want to continue to build this fund, and build it, and build it, and build it? So it's it's an interesting, it's a philosophical discussion as much as it is money thing.
When you hear like a lot of scholarship funds that just sit there, because nobody asks, I thought maybe it was a.
Yep, because they're, you know, they have somebody that they want to be in music, and it's going to, you know, into this particular field of study, and some some years, there's nobody that goes there. So.
Gotcha.
Yeah. Other questions? Alright, thank you.
Okay, so the next board report is myself, um, wellness and buildings and grounds. So the buildings and grounds has not formally met, however, um, there's been various assessments on all of our buildings and facilities. And we're actually having an uh facility presentation network session tonight um to follow up on some of those assessments that have happened. And then um the wellness committee met last week, um, so just a couple pieces from there. There's um three internship, or three students that talked about their internships with Catherine, from Catherine Anderson's class. Um, related directly to wellness, so one of the interns is working on the Thrive Initiative with students. Um, so she um has a focus group that she's identified, and she's finding out um that a lot of students know about mental illness. That they don't really know much about mental health and mental well-being, and how that's different than illness itself. So kind of teaching more preventative strategies and resilient strategies versus what to do when you are mentally ill. Um, and then there were a couple students that have been um working alongside Patrick Hollister at bicycle, or at Partnership for Health on the bicycle friendly. Um, piece from a district standpoint, and then also um going out to local businesses and um talking to them about the importance of bicycle friendly and what that means for our community. And then um Lance was there and gave just an update on the shared table concept that they're doing. Um, down in the cafeteria here at Kennedy. So rather than dumping fresh fruit, the grab and go options are fresh food. Um, there's a shared table that students can drop their unwanted items at, and um he said. Throughout the day, and by the end of the day, the table's empty, so after lunch, there tends to be a variety of items on there, and by the end of the day, those items are gone. So he's felt that's been successful. Um, and then just from a staff wellness side, they, today, I saw an email go out. That there's a staff wellness challenge now through the holidays with a maintain, don't gain piece, and then just healthy tips and things to think about throughout the, throughout the holiday. So, that's good, everybody needs those little tips. So, um, the wellness meeting's open to the public, um, so the next one is going to be Tuesday, January eleventh at three thirty. Is welcome, so, any questions? Okay. Matt Lucky.
Okay, so the Minnesota High School League has not, well, they had a work session, so they, the board did not meet formally, so they don't meet till December, so. I have nothing to report for them, but Big Country Service Co-op, we had our uh, Minnesota Service Co-op has had their annual convention. Um, Stronger Together, and uh, I thought I'd just give a couple highlights. So one of the highlights, and sorry, Steve, I'm gonna do a little bit of legislative release on here on this one. Is that right now, we're about twelve percent above projections for from February, so for the state revenue. So for what they thought they were gonna be receiving, and what we have right now is about twelve percent above, so that's a positive. So we'll see if that holds as they go through. Um, the big change that is coming is this is the year when the districts, um, by the way, here's a trivia question. Which uh state has the most largest state senate? Minnesota, it has sixty-seven seats, our members. So this is the year that everybody, number one, this coming year, everybody is up for election. So all senators and house representatives are all up for, the house are all up for uh election this coming year, but it's also redistricting. And so one of the things that is happening with the population change is if you take the, of the sixty-seven members or districts. Um, if you take the eleven county metro area, forty-one of the sixty-seven are from the metro area. And so when you think about great state Minnesota and our representation down at the state capital, it is becoming smaller. And especially, there's some districts that have, are gonna lose some seats just because of, I think it was up in, up in the range. Uh, they're losing a few, uh, at least a seat or something like that, and going down the metro, because that's where the population growth is. So, again, it's one of those things there, I know a lot of people like to talk about um Republican, Democrat, but it also is definitely uh. Outstate metro kind of uh, you know, and and how that affects funding. I think one of the perfect examples for us is this long-term maintenance um for facilities and what Metro is able to capture for for maintaining their buildings and what outstate is. And how it's taken a long time for us even to get closer to them. And so, anyway, that was just one of those things that came up that I thought was was actually very interesting and. So yeah, so that is coming up, and so something to keep on our radar, but at least some positive news on that from that the state revenue is. And just so that, you know, sometimes this is the year that normally there's more policies and maybe a bonding, but last year they did a bonding bill. And they also pass the budget, so ultimately, they don't have to do anything. So, it's kind of an interesting year, but, so we'll see, so, um, what comes about. The other one I just want to talk about really quick, and it kind of goes with our thrive, and you know, when we talked about district kindness and stuff like that, and mental health. Is we had a gentleman named Joe Beckman come, and he's he's kind of like the happy caveman, is his name, in the power of positivity. And he had mentioned something, and I just thought I'd just bring it up, because it's kind of an interesting thing, is he talked about a Harvard study that's been going on for eighty years. And one of the things that they always ask is kind of what, you know, what you, what makes you happy at the end of your life? And most people have said the quality of their relationships and human contact connection. And what was interesting is he is, he showed a deal, and I I got on play or whatever, is that uh since two thousand and eleven. Since the iPhone has come major, and that has gone up, human connections have gone down. But what has increased is anxiety, depression, things of that. So is there a cor- correlation between maybe social media and being on your phone? And and especially for young people and youth, and they actually show a lot of questions about um, especially uh youth, women and girls. And just their their, what they look at themselves and how that can affect them. And so, anyway, I thought it was a, an interesting thing, and uh, just not that I'd like to do tidbits here, but since people might listen to this. Uh, Netflix has this movie called Social Dilemma. It's definitely worth watching, um, I'm not, it's uh one of those that you watch as a parent and you go, hmm, interesting. So it's one that you can watch with your kids too, because it'll make them think about it too, and just what's going on, so. And another thing that he talked about, because I like this, he always says, they say, so it's they out there. Is that the human person has about sixty thousand thoughts a day up to. So between sixty-two and and sixty thousand, as I seen, but he said sixty thousand, so I mean sixty thousand. Of that, ninety percent are from the day before, from our thoughts, and of that, eighty percent of them are negative thoughts. So he had just talked about that it's important for us to take our thoughts, and he used that attitude of gratitude and. And using opportunities to, like I said, control our thoughts. So, I thought it was really good, I thought he uh had a really good um speech, it was really good, and and people really enjoyed him, so. So there's just a couple things from from the conference, and so. And we did have an annual, our regular board meeting, and to be honest, it was a lot of just regular stuff, that we go through, health insurance, people coming on and and moving and changes and stuff like that. And we are going through our strategic planning, and we're coming to the end of that, and there's some really neat stuff, I think that's gonna come. And there's some really neat stuff I think that's going to come out of that. And one of the things that they're going to emphasize in Lakes Country Service Co-op is that we're not going to look at, like for our school district, is that we're just a member. They want to have a bigger thought process, and say, "community". So they want to impact the community within what members are in. And I thought that was a positive. So, because there are some co-ops that just look at, outside Lakes Country Service, that look at just their service to the individual and that you have to purchase something to become a member. And theirs is more, well, we want to impact the communities that we serve. So, anyway, I thought it was some good stuff. So that's what I had to report.
Any questions for Matt? Thanks. All right, Steve?
Uh, for legislative, I'll report more on the federal level than the states. Um, I'll blow my material. It's mine, it's what's talking. And, and really just, we all kind of know that, uh, on the federal level, the employers with 100 or more employees are required to have their employees either vaccinated or subject to weekly testing. Now, that's the federal OSHA rule that's supposed to be in place by the end of January 4th, I think, of next year. However, Minnesota has not come up with any guidance from Minnesota OSHA. So we're just manually waiting for them to tell us what to do. Because there's always asterisks with things like this. So we don't know, schools are included. So that's really just about it. There's really nothing with that yet. It's just more verification of that, no, we're not, we're not mandating vaccines yet. With our employees, we're not, we haven't, obviously, I didn't some of that, so. Meeting preferred, did not meet or prefer. And then I deferred curriculum review over to Superintendent Drake. I was out of town for the meeting, so thank you for taking everything.
Yeah, you're welcome. So we had our November meeting. I do want to thank Christie for an excellent World's Best Workforce Report. It was very informative and a really sharp presentation. So that was reviewed with the DACRAC Committee as part of our annual process. And then we moved into presentations by our fine arts departments. So we started with visual arts. And our kids are really doing some amazing work, whether it's pottery, or drawing, or painting, or other media. It's really interesting to watch their progression from the early introductory classes to the stuff that they're doing in the upper classes and as independent studies. So we have a lot to be proud of. There, I believe there were three different contests that they submit work to over the course of the year. And historically, our students have been very competitive in those contests and receiving recognition. And the, the instructors were very, very knowledgeable about what they were wanting to accomplish with the standards and how they wanted the students to progress in the program. There was a question from the DACRAC Committee members about the status of elementary art. So it's my understanding with the history of the district that we had elementary art at one time quite a few years ago. Perhaps was cut as a result of statutory operating debt that the district worked its way out of. We do not have elementary art at this time, although the strategic plan did set aside $10,000 in our budget. And we were working with the CADETS to secure a couple of local artists. So we had honorarium dollars to pay them for their time and expertise as well as for supplies for the kids. However, due to some extraneous factors, neither one of those two artists were able to follow through. And I just need to reach back out to the CADETS. They were going to attempt to find a couple other replacement artists. I don't know where we're at with that at this point. We had kind of looked at that all along as probably after the first of the year piece anyway. So I wouldn't necessarily say that we've missed the boat on this opportunity. But if we're not able to find people willing and able to come in and do it, then we'll go back to the drawing board. On the music side, the district has had longstanding reputations being very strong in music. We have strong vocal music band and orchestra. And it was nice to hear those presentations. Our, our music groups travel nationally on occasion. COVID kind of wreaked havoc on a little bit of that over the last year and a half or so. But we do have, have had a couple of honors. We had a, an acapella group that qualified to perform at a state level. And then this coming February, the MMEA Conference, which is the big state music educators conference. One of the sessions will be done by Scott Cumberall and one of his younger groups. And basically, it's a, it's almost like a rehearsal like you would have in a normal class period, where he shows people his instructional techniques. And other teachers get to watch how he works with the students. And we have a number of our own music department that will go down and participate in that conference. So that was the bulk of the DACRAC.
Any questions, Luca? Thanks, Jeff.
And now I'm up again?
Well, I was going to say, any questions for Steve? Okay.
All right.
That one.
Yeah, that one. So let's, I'm covering or pinching for Missy on staff development tonight. So the staff development meeting, really, there were only a small handful of individual requests to attend various workshops, et cetera. The bulk of the conversation really was looking ahead to our staff development days in January, February, and March, and planning out how we were going to support our teachers with the implementation of the project-based learning activities that will take place. And again, part of our strategic plan and aligning to 21st century employability skills. So as a kind of an interesting aside, at least interesting to me, the keynote speaker from the MREA Conference that I attended part of over Sunday night and this morning and afternoon, his focus, he was a gentleman out of Massachusetts. And his focus was really on project-based learning. And he was from a very, very small rural community and talked about how his students really kind of rolled up their sleeves and did a lot of work that larger communities would pay adult people to do. One example he gave was a huge amphibian study. And these kids did some amazing stuff. They surveyed local amphibian populations. They ended up putting out kind of a field guide for the amphibians that they found, corrected some state officials who said, "no, that species doesn't live in your community". So they said, "come on over and see", and they showed them that it did. And so really, really neat stuff. And it was just nice to see that the vision for, for educating our students is supported by the experiences of other people throughout the country as well. So that was staff development. We do have a couple of people that, one that we're waiting on a proposal from and another one that we've received one. Both would be very, very strong presenters in working with our staff. And both have an interest in train the trainer model that we're very excited about, because we don't view this as a one-and-done initiative. We want this to continue as a core instructional practice in our district. So that was the, the bulk of staff development. Any question about that before I go into my actual report? All right, so on my side, I just want to say several thanks, first of all, to Mark Anderson, Ivan Hurst, our band and choral directors, our students, and our veterans for a wonderful Veterans Day program. The kids at, I didn't make it over to Cleveland, I had another commitment, but the kids at Cleveland, they retired a flag. So that was important for the kids to see that process. But really a nice event for the community to see. We had Patriots pen and Voice of Democracy. The ladies presented several quilts of baller to some people, which was really, really touching. Each of those folks received a standing ovation from the audience. And of course, our, our music is fantastic. But really nice to be able to host that recognition and thank you on behalf of our community, to our veterans. So appreciate everyone's work. And the next news I have is both a negative but a positive too. So our COVID numbers are not good. We have officially, in the, basically the first quarter of this school year, surpassed the total number of confirmed positive cases than we had all of last school year. I arrived back from the conference just a few minutes prior to this boarding meeting and I saw that we had another dozen confirmed cases today. It is having an impact on us. It has been especially hard hit at our ALC lately. It's affected the number of our staff. Obviously, this disease is really hard to explain and try to quantify. Some staff people have a very mild reaction to it. But we've also had staff members that have missed a considerable amount of time in their recovery. So our thoughts continue to go out to those people that are dealing with that. On the positive side, again, with a small caveat, I, I just want to express my appreciation to the administration and especially to the teachers and staff that continually demonstrate a great deal of flexibility in stepping forward and filling in when we have staff that are out. We cannot bring enough people from the outside in to fill these vacancies. They're not out there. And so when we have classrooms that aren't filled by the regular classroom teacher, we're pulling reading interventionists. Or we're pulling people that have other roles, like gifted and talented. Or we're pulling teachers hour by hour, period by period, and funneling them in to cover the instructional needs for the day. Or the administrators themselves are stepping in to take over the classes where we can't find anyone to, that's, that's free and able to do that. So my, again, my deepest appreciation for everyone's flexibility. This pace will be difficult to sustain over a long haul. Teachers do need their prep to take care of their regular work in preparing their classroom for instruction. I have heard from some administration that the stress level on the part of the staff is high. And we hope to have some more conversations about that and what can be done during the course of this week. So that's kind of the update on, on COVID. Some other items I just wanted to touch on fairly briefly is, we'll have Johnson Controls here tonight to give an update on the energy assessment that they did and a couple other potential projects with the district. The facilities committee is back up and, and meeting. The big questions on the docket for the facility committee is long-term. Should fifth grade remain at KSS? Or should we look at moving fifth grade out of here? And the landing spot for fifth grade would be Cleveland. But then that causes, causes a displacement there. And so what do you do with kindergarten? Should it end up going into the 36,000 square feet that remain to be developed at Lincoln? Or are there some other long-term solutions that need to be explored? And as a result of the facilities assessments that have been done, we know that we have a considerable amount of, of work to do at McKinley Adams and especially Roosevelt. And these are just due to age of the buildings and maintenance that needs to be done. I sat in on a county presentation on restorative justice that was interesting. The tech committee met and we talked about cybersecurity, which continues to be an ongoing issue and concern for most businesses. Chromebook repairs. And then we also examined a data warehousing software that would make data analysis much easier on our part. And actually, a, a piece that I could use some feedback from the community on would be how they find our website, is it user-friendly to navigate? Because it's time that we at least took a look at that and examined whether there are better products out there that would make it an easier, more easy to, to navigate for our, our patrons. We had a Central Lakes Conference meeting that focused on how districts are handling COVID and also how we are developing our students as leaders. And then I wanted to end with a really nice athletic event honoring four of our students that are going to go on and play college athletics. So congratulations to Piper, Carter, Ellie, and Tori and our athletic office for a really classy event and for people to show up and attend. And good luck to those kids. The Thrive Initiative for the month of November is focused on kindness and couldn't be more appropriate. So I'm thrilled to be working with that. And with that, I'll entertain any questions.
You were talking about amphibians and I imagine that's science and dissection and all that good stuff. I thought it was interesting, one of, one of our staff, I'm not sure, Steph, Steph's great science. And so he had asked his students if they have anybody in their family who hunts deer to bring in the heart from their, from their deer. So our grandson brought in a heart from one of our deer. So I thought that was kind of cool to, to have that local connection.
That's good stuff.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Sorry.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, we'll move on to general consent items. Minutes from the October 15th board meeting and the bills and charter report.
Yes, Blake and I met and we talked. And Matt was there as well before, yeah, 2:45, that's right, before Brandon. So we didn't meet this afternoon. And we reviewed the bills from October. And we went through line by line. Some of the highlights were, we had a couple of them from Bradco Restoration. They've been doing a lot of talk point. We had a couple of them in the 25, $30,000 range. Some Cooper's bills from the summer, kind of late coming in the bills, but maybe 17,000 to 18,000 there. And one and another 22,000 there. So just, just general office furniture. Replacement cameras at Kennedy was $6,000. We talked a little bit about, and I don't know, this kind of maybe comes to Matt's report mentioning it from Lakes LCSU, but they have, they do coordinate some of the food services. And I know we're working with cash, our district distributing of Fargo. And so we, you know, we spent about $45,000 last month with them. But there's a lot of districts right now that are having trouble finding food. And some of their distributors are leaving them high and dry. And so there's a lot of scrambling. And I know even Lance is in scrambling a little bit. He mentioned that in his report last, at our last meeting, trying to find some things. And there's just some things that just are not available. We did spend about $10,000 on new basketball hoops over at the REC at Roosevelt, the old gym. Do we know what we're going to do with the old ones? These are sitting in the entry right there.
Well, the, the bracketing, we wouldn't want anyone to be using. But the actual hoop and that, yeah, that could be reused.
Sure, okay.
Yeah.
Good deal. We did have 27,000, 27,000 went to Comstock. We still have over 300,000 left in that, on that contract. And I think some of that is due to the punch list and some things going on in the cafeteria. And some of those things can't be done. So Thanksgiving break or Christmas break because of the grinding involved. And so there's some things that, I don't know, that Jeff and Blake have been chasing on and making calls on. So hopefully we get that resolved in the next couple of months. Other than that, there's some science curriculum and some student, $7,000 in student desks that went over to include some fund balance. Again, financially doing good, which is reflected in the audit report. So our numbers are looking good and we'll have some more. We talked a little bit about our resolutions tonight when we met and talked a little bit about the audit when we met today. And so covered a lot around, but overall, just want to thank Blake for what he's been doing. And we'll thank him again when we do the first reading of the, of the audit report. He's done a great job and appreciate that. If there's any questions, that's my report.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to personnel.
All right, good evening, everyone. First off, speaking of attitude, attitude for gratitude, it's American Education Week. So we just want to thank all our staff for their hard work and dedication that they bring with them each and every day into our buildings. And then just moving on to our support staff hires, we have. And then just moving on to our support staff hires, we have Elizabeth Gray, food server, service assistant server over at Adams. Lori Gruy, she's moved from Adams over to Kennedy in a dishwasher position. Matt Opats, position change, she'll need custodian here at Kennedy Secondary School. Stephanie Lundey, position change to student supporting over at Cleveland. And then John Hagie, long-term substitute for a special ed paraprofessional here at Kennedy Secondary School. Support staff resignations, Holly Schmidt at Cleveland, Amy Newkirk at Adams, and Gladys Trosvik at Cleveland. Just to note that Gladys Trosvik has been with us for 45 years.
Wow.
So that is, that'd be darn awesome. She retired and then came back and worked with us for, I don't know how many more years, but quite a few, equalling 45 total. So our hat's off to Gladys and for her hard work and dedication to our school district. For certified staff hires, we have a number of them that are basically under IQ category, Jennifer Carlson, Allison Ringquist, contract increases, Joy Miller and Michaela Ellers, both just contracts that we have with them. And then an overload contract for Kendall Kohler, physical education teacher. That's due to her work that she kind of does partially at Kennedy Secondary School and then also at McKinley, and because of the scheduling, we have to have an overload contract for the school year for her. So I would recommend these items for board approval.
Can I get a motion to approve the general consent items?
So moved.
A second?
I'll second.
So there's no old business, so we'll move on to the new business.
So we have.
We got a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There's no motion.
Any discussion on the motion?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Any discussion on the consent items? Nope. All right.
All in favor?
Yeah, all in favor?
All right.
Sorry.
All in favor.
Okay, so there's no old business, so I'll move to the new business. So the first thing here is the joint resolution with Fergus Falls Education Association honoring the veterans. Whereas Independent School District 544 has veterans and its employees who have served in the armed forces. And whereas the district and Fergus Falls Education Association wish to recognize all those who have given so much for their country, be it hereby resolved that the school district 544 and the Fergus Falls Education Association honor and appreciate all veterans for their dedication to our country and service to others. And I get a motion.
I'll offer that resolution. Move for it. Oh, is it just a motion?
No, it's a resolution.
It is a resolution, okay. I'll offer the resolution, move for its adoption.
I'll second.
And a roll call, please?
Yeah, Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
Steve Vigassau?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Matt Lempke, yes. The resolution passes.
All right, number two here, first reading of FY 21 Fergus Falls Public Schools Financial Audit. There's no action. Is there any question? Blake, do you want to add anything to that? Okay. And then, so 2020 and 2021 Fergus Falls Public School World Best Workforce Report. We heard from Christie. Can I get a motion to approve that?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, and all in favor?
Any discussion?
I'm sorry, any discussion?
Yeah, Christie and I talked today, so there was a couple of things in the detailed report that were excluded because we didn't have the numbers yet, and you have updated those numbers, and so started making over that, but the report is complete, but what we saw wasn't coming to today, so anyway, thank you for doing what we did, too.
That's good.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay. Okay, then there's a request to increase our educator position, job description number 317 at the ALC from 6.75 hours per day to seven hours per day, effective November 16, 2021. Do you want to comment on that?
Sure, and this request came from our coordinator, Kristen Tool, and it's just regarding making sure we have coverage at the end of the day. So that is the main purpose of increasing it for 15 minutes per day.
Can I get a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Do you have any discussion, any questions?
Sorry.
You're good, Kirby?
Yep.
Christie, please. All in favor?
All right.
All right. So next, we have the Employee Assistance Program Agreement with Lakeland Mental Health, effective January 1, 2022, through December 31, 2023. And this was just an increase in rate from $74 to $100?
$97.
I'm sorry.
I want $3.
$97 to $100. I have that right, I'm wrong, is that what she said?
Yes.
$97 to $100?
Yes, it was just this very slight increase for, it's a two-year contract.
So can I get a motion to approve that?
So moved.
And a second?
Second, you got, it was deep.
And any discussion on that?
Not you?
Do you know how much this is used at all?
It is used quite, it's not used quite a bit, but we do really encourage it, and it's been used much more during our COVID. Yes. It is confidential use and such, too, but it, we do have, we have monthly use out of it from our staff, and I definitely encourage it also very much so.
And they can, they can arrange that, just by calling Lakeland directly or go through you, or?
No, they, they call, they, they, they're provided with the instruction on what they need to do. There's five different locations with Lakeland Mental Health, so they can call and set up an appointment on their own with whatever location. They may not feel comfortable with the area like Fergus Falls, they might feel like they want to go to Alexandria, for example, or I think Glenwood and Moorhead, can't remember all of them, but there are five locations.
Anything else? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And so next one, resolution establishing combined polling places for multiple precincts and designating hours during which the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections, not held on the day of the statewide election. So this is a long resolution, so I'm just gonna read the four polling places, and if you want more information, they'll be in our minutes from the board meeting. So polling place number one is the Fergus Falls Public Library Community Room at 205 Hampton Avenue here in Fergus Falls. Polling place number two is the YMCA Community Room, 64 Freiburg Avenue, Fergus Falls. Number three, polling place number three is the Minnesota State Community and Technical College at 1414 College Way here in Fergus Falls. And then the fourth polling place is the Bigwood Event Center at 925 Western Avenue here in Fergus Falls. So can I get a motion to pass that resolution?
What's the wording?
I'll offer the resolution.
I'll offer the resolution and move for its adoption.
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any discussion? I get a roll call, please?
Yes. Steve Vigassau?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
Matt Lempke, yes. The resolution passes.
Okay, thank you. All right, Kirby, you are on the call for assistance.
Yes, I know. We have three resolutions regarding fund balance transfers. I will go through and read the text for the first one, and then we will do three separate resolutions after that. So, whereas Minnesota Governor Jim Walz issued Emergency Executive Order 20-19 on March 25, 2020, which stated in part, paragraph 21, "Upon approval by the executive council, school districts and schools are authorized to transfer operating funds from certain programs that are not already assigned to or encumbered by staff salary and benefits or otherwise encumbered by federal law for the following purposes. A, to provide care to eligible children during the school day; B, to pay additional transportation costs incurred between March 3, 2020 and April 3, 2020, needed to implement this executive order in providing distance learning instruction. Whereas if fund transfers allowed, if the transfer meets the criteria, step forth in paragraph 21(c) of Emergency Executive Order 20-19, of which there are six phases. Number one, the transfer does not increase state aid obligations to the district or result in additional property tax authority for the district or charter school. Number two, a transfer is limited to the operating funds of a district or charter school. Number three, a school board must approve a fund transfer by the fiscal year reporting deadline. Number four, a district or charter school must maintain accounting records for the purpose of this executive order that are sufficient to document both the specific funds transferred and use of those funds. Such accounting records are subject to auditor review. Number five, any execution of this flexibility must not interfere with or jeopardize funding per federal requirements. And number six, any transfer must not interfere with equitable delivery of distance learning or social distancing models. Whereas, the school board of Fergus Falls Public Schools, Independent School District 544, has determined that the criteria identified in the paragraph 21(c) have been satisfied for a fund transfer pursuant to Emergency Executive Order 20-19. So for this one, we're gonna say, the school board of Independent School District 544 has reviewed and approved the attached request for fund transfer for community education, so therefore be it resolved that the school board of Independent School District 544 authorizes the school district administration to submit the attached request for fund transfer dash community education. And I would offer this resolution and move for its adoption for the request for fund transfer of community education.
I get a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Anything you want to add, Blake? All right.
I mean, I probably, we should all move, I mean, you guys know it's Mary Madison to the room.
Yep.
She did such a great job in this program, that's why there is this extra in there for the district, so just wanted to give her kudos.
Do a roll call, please, Mike?
I would love to. Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Steve Vigassau?
Yes.
Matt Lempke, yes. Resolution passes.
All right, number eight, we do have an identical resolution regarding fund balance transfers, whereas everything that I said is exactly the same, and I will pick up where it is slightly different. Whereas, the school board of Independent School District 544 has reviewed and approved the attached request for fund transfer for school readiness, therefore be it resolved that the school board of Independent School District 544 authorizes the school district administration to submit the attached request for fund transfer for school readiness. And I'd like to offer that resolution and move for its approval.
And I'll second it.
Roll call?
Steve Vigassau?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
Matt Lempke, yes. Resolution passes.
And number nine, our third and final resolution regarding fund balance transfers. Again, everything that we mentioned is the same as far as the executive order and the requirements for that. The difference here is, whereas the school, I'm sorry. Whereas the school board of Independent School District 544 has reviewed and approved the attached request for fund transfer from ECFE, therefore be it resolved that the school board of Independent School District 544 authorizes the school district administration to submit the attached request for fund transfer from ECFE, which is early childhood family education.
I get a motion to offer that resolution?
Okay, the resolution?
I'll, I'll, I'll offer that resolution and move for its approval. Adoption.
And I'll second it.
Any discussions? Luca?
Steve Vigassau?
Yes.
Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Matt Lempke, yes. Resolution passes.
Okay.
All right, we have a lease agreement between the Independent School District 544 and the Balance Gymnastics Center, effective 2021 and through 2023. That was in our board packet. Can I get a motion to approve that?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any?
Vote.
Very good.
Vote.
Next one is School War Policy 208, Development, Adoption, and Implementation of Policies. Can I get a motion to approve that, please?
So moved.
Yeah, Steve, and I'll give it a second.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And a vote, say aye. All right, the resolution passes. Okay, we are going to be closing in our session pursuant to the Minnesota Statutes 13D.05, subdivision 2.3, for discussion of private educational data related to potential expulsion of the student. Following disclosure, we will reopen to consider potential action related to resolution of expulsion regarding student A. So all of you hanging out, we'll have to leave. If you want to come back, you sure can for our work session to follow. So is there any motion to close?
I'll move.
Steve, I have a motion, I'll, I'll second it.
Steve and Matt?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor of closing meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I need to shut the camera? There was a post saying aye.